Name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. How many of you know this law of diminishing utility? I did some management course, amen. How many of you know this one? Yeah, I think. Yesterday, I noticed, yesterday afternoon, we had this wonderful lunch. And everyone had this chicken. But when I noticed in the night, the same chicken was served. Almost half of the people, they did not eat it. Because when you eat the same thing again and again, sometimes even when you listen to the same person again and again, the satisfaction may not be really much. Shall we look unto the Lord in prayer? Heavenly Father, we come before you. And we just want to look unto you, Jesus. And we just want to humble ourselves. And we prostrate before you. And we pray, Lord, that you will speak to us. That your Spirit will minister to each one of us. Grant us your grace and grant us your mercy. And I pray for your unction, dear Lord. Let the name be glorified in this place. We ask all this in Jesus' precious name. Amen, amen. We've been looking at this theme, looking unto Jesus, the Author and the Finisher of our faith. Yesterday and the day before, I have taken few sessions, how we need to behold Jesus to be able to be confirmed to the image of his Son. I do not know whether you heard this story of a sadhu. There was this young man from a village. So this young man, he was so passionate and he was so devoted. So finally, he made a decision with his life. And what was the decision that he made? He decided to leave the village and go to the nearby forest in order to meditate. So he left his family. He left all the things that he had, all the possessions that he had. So he went only with a little bit of, you know, only with one piece of cloth to cover his loins. And that was the only piece of property that he took from his house. And he went to the forest and he was living there at the river side in the forest. Now, every morning, this was his routine. He gets up in the morning, takes bath. And he sits for meditation. And he was eating the fruit, you know, that was available there at the forest. And that was how he was living his life. So one fine day, when he got up in the morning, he took bath there in the river. When he came back, the only piece of property, the cloth to cover his loins, that was torn. And he was so upset. And he followed the reason for that one. And finally, he figured it out. There was a rat where he was living, nearby the cave. And that rat was the reason why this piece of cloth was torn. So now his meditation was getting disturbed. So he was thinking, how can I chase away this rat? So one fine day, he got this brilliant idea. What was the idea? He thought, if I could bring a cat, the cat will be able to chase this rat. And he brought this cat and the cat was staying with him. And that idea really worked. The cat was able to successfully chase this rat from that place. After a few days, now he had another problem. You know, how to take care of this rat? That was a challenge that he had. How to feed and who will take care and how to feed this cat? After some time, he got one more idea. If I could buy a cow, the cow will be able to give the milk. And with this milk, I'll be able to feed this cat. And that really worked. And now, you know, fast forward after a couple of decades, there was the friend, you know, who was living in the village. He came in search of this friend, old friend. And he came to the forest and searching for this sadhu, where is he? And there at the river side, he saw a palace. So he went and he wanted to inquire about the sadhu. So he went and knocked at the palace door. And there came this man with his wife. And then he enquired, sir, many years back, couple of decades back, I used to have a friend in my village. He left everything, you know, and he came to the forest to meditate. I wanted to meet this person, where is he? And the man who opened the door, you know, from the palace, he said, it is me. You know, over time, what will happen? You know, now he got another problem, who will take care of the cow? And therefore, he got married, you know? And who will take care of his wife? So he got the house and the palace. We begin in a way, wonderful way. But over time, what will happen if we don't keep our focus? If we don't really hold on to the convictions that we have in the Word of God? The way how we begin, it doesn't really guarantee, you know, the way how we expected it is going to be. We need to constantly revise our life. We need to constantly re-look our lives, you know, how we are, you know, doing and where we are heading. And that's the reason we, you and I, we need to have a goal in this life. And therefore, we need to pursue the goal and pursue constantly, you know, putting in every effort. There was a goal for Apostle Paul. What was the goal? He says, in the book of Philippians, chapter three, verse 10, what does he say? "I want to know Christ. I want to know the power of his resurrection. I want to have the fellowship of sharing in his sufferings. And somehow, I wanted to be like him." You know, after many years of his ministry, after many years of laboring for the Lord, his focus and his goal, it did not change, it did not change. He had a vision. Even we see in the book of Acts, chapter 26, verse 19. He was standing before King Agrippa. And you know what he says, verse 19, it says, "Oh, King Agrippa, I was not disobedient to the heavenly vision." Towards the end of his life, in a few years, you know, he will be, you know, no more, he'll not be there. But he says very clearly, with firm conviction, "Oh, King Agrippa, I was not disobedient to the heavenly vision." You know, he was very bold and he pursued with all the energy, with everything that he had. He considered everything a loss for the sake of knowing Christ Jesus. He says, "I want to know him. I want to be with him. And somehow, I want to become like him." My dear brothers and sisters, it is important for us to keep our focus. To keep, you know, our focus on the Lord Jesus Christ. And to be passionate about what we do. And passionate about what we do and what we pursue. Do you know there is a story of a woodcutter? You know, and this is how I define passion. There was this woodcutter in a village. And what was his job every single day? He gets up in the morning, goes to the forest. And what does he do? He cut the firewood, brings it to the village market. And he sells the firewood. And that was how he was making his living. After many years, every day, that was his routine. He cuts the firewood and then he sells it in the village market. And that was how he was making his living. Now, one fine day, the rich man of that village, he came and approached this woodcutter. See, come, let us have the deal. You know, how much you're getting? He said, some amount. And the rich man said, "I'm going to offer you ten times more than what you are getting right now, every single month. And you need to work for me." Very enticing offer, isn't it? So this woodcutter said, yes, this is a wonderful offer for me. I'm going to get ten times more than what I'm earning right now. But the rich man said, but with one condition. He asked, what is the condition, sir? So the rich man said, every morning you are getting up, you have to do the same thing. He said, okay, sir. And every morning, you go to the forest and cut the firewood, you have to do the same thing. So he said, yes, sir, I will do. But this is the condition. When you cut the firewood, you should not use the sharp edge of the axe, but rather, you should use the blunt edge of the axe to cut the firewood. He thought, it's okay, it's not a big deal. So he started going to the forest every single morning. And he was trying to cut the firewood using the blunt edge of the axe. And you know what will happen? At the end of the day, you know, not able to cut much. After a few months, there was some sort of dissatisfaction in his heart. He goes back to the rich man and he said, sir, I'll not be able to work for you, work like this. The rich man asked, what is the problem? Are you not satisfied with the money? I'm going to increase it by twenty times more than what you are getting. Again, the offer was so enticing. He agreed. And the rich man said, the same conditions, terms and conditions apply. You see, you know, with a small asterisk, the same terms and conditions apply. So he went back. And again, he started going back to the, you know, forest every single morning, trying to use the blunt edge of the axe, but not able to cut. After a few months, he was so dissatisfied. He goes back to the rich man and he says, sir, I will not be able to work for you like this. I will not be able to work. The rich man asked, why? What is the problem? And this woodcutter said, sir, every morning, when I go to the forest and cut the firewood and whenever I hit, you know, the wood with my axe, I would like to see the wooden chips flying in the air. And those wooden chips will give satisfaction to me. That gives satisfaction to me. My dear friends, passion is something which will not be sold with the money. It cannot be sold by the things of this world. Though people will not realize you, though people will not recognize you, but you are still able to do the same thing, what you are doing, not because of the paycheck, not because of the recognition, but because God has called you. And therefore, when you continue to work, you know, when you continue to work and walk, because that gives meaning and satisfaction, that is passion. And we see in the life of Apostle Paul, he says, "I want to know him. I want to be with him. And somehow, and somehow, I want to become like him." And that is the passion which drove him, which made him, you know, to go from one country to another country, to go, you know, images of the dangers from his own countrymen. You know, in the midst of the sea, shipwreck, being persecuted, did not really matter. Because deep down, he knew and he was aware, the one who called him. And this morning, I would like to share with you, beholding Jesus somehow, you know, to become like him. If you have your Bibles open with me, to the book of Romans, chapter eight. Book of Romans, chapter eight. And shall we read verses 28, 29, and 30? 28, 29, and 30. Are you there with me? Yes, even from the people in the back? Yeah, okay. Yes, shall we read these three verses? Romans, chapter eight, verse 28, 29, and 30, yeah. And we know that all things work together for good to those who love God, to those who are called according to his purpose. For whom he foreknew, he also predestined to be confirmed to the image of his Son, that he might be the firstborn among many brethren. Moreover, whom he predestined, this he also called; whom he called, this he also justified; and whom he justified, this he also glorified. He says, and we know that God works in all things to those who love him and who are called according to his purpose. And then he says, whom he foreknew, he also predestined to be confirmed to the image of his Son, Christ Jesus, so that he may be the firstborn among the brethren. I would like to share with you four thoughts, you know, from the portion that we read. You know, the first thought that we, you know, that we need to be aware. He says, you know, God works in all things. And before that, the Bible says, and we know, what is the thing that we need to know? And what is the thing that we need to be reminded again and again as believers, as followers and the disciples of Christ Jesus? You know, we see in the book of Romans, chapter eight, you know, there are three things that he mentions. There are many more things, but three things I would like to highlight, what Apostle Paul mentions here. Chapter eight, verse one, he says, "Now, therefore, there is no condemnation for whoever is in Christ Jesus," you know? He says, you know, we are accepted by the Lord Jesus Christ. How wonderful it is. If you go back few chapters and see the book of Romans, chapter five, verse six, verse eight, and verse 10, it says like this, "While we are still sinners, while we are still enemies, while we are still powerless, Christ died for our sin." And the Bible very clearly says, "For the wages of sin is death." And that's what you and I, we are supposed to receive, the wrath of God and the condemnation of God. But thanks be to God, because of his mercy, because of the grace, and because of the love that he demonstrated for us on the cross of Calvary. The Bible says, "Therefore, now whoever is in Christ Jesus, they are not condemned, but they are accepted by the Lord Jesus Christ." How privileged, you know, how privileged people we are. And that's why the Bible says, how great is the love that the Father has bestowed upon us, that we should be called the children of God. You and I, we are accepted by the Lord. We are accepted not because of our good works, not because we are smart people, not because we are educated people, just because of his grace and grace alone. We are accepted, we need to be reminded about that one. The second thing that he says in the book of Romans, chapter eight, verse 14 and 15, he says, "For those who are led by the Spirit of God are the sons of God." And then verse 15, he says, "We are adopted into the family of God. We are accepted by the Lord and we are also adopted by the Lord." Have you ever seen people who are married? They will wait for some years for the children. If the child, if the child is, if they're not having the children, they will do hundreds of things. They will go to multiple specialists. They will try to go and meet the reproductive medicine specialist or go for IVF. Do you know why? Because they wanted to have a child of their own. If none of these things work, what they try to do, then they will go for adoption. Are you getting my point? But look at what the Bible says. God the Father, he had this only begotten Son even before. But look at the love that he demonstrated for us. How great is that love? Though he has this begotten Son, he still, you know, accepted us by washing us with his precious blood. And not only that one, he also adopted us into his family. You and I, we become the adopted children of God, adopted daughter and adopted son. And Apostle Paul says, and we know, we need to be reminded about that one, that we are accepted by the Lord, that we are adopted into his family. And not only that one, God knew that we are going to have the challenges. And that's the reason, in the same chapter, verse 26, it says, Romans, chapter eight, verse 26. You know, there are three things that we see there. Weakness, isn't it? And the Holy Spirit and prayer. We are also assisted by the Holy Spirit. God knew that we are weak people and we need a helper. That's the title that is given for the Holy Spirit. I am not going to leave you as orphans, but I'm going to send a comforter, a helper, who will be with you and who will be also inside of you. And Apostle Paul says, we know, we need to be reminded that we are accepted by the Lord, but not condemned. We are adopted and also assisted by the Holy Spirit. And he intercedes on our behalf. How privileged people we are. We have the double intercession, you know that? Holy Spirit intercedes here. And we see in the book of Hebrews, chapter seven, verse 15, even Jesus is interceding. How privileged people we are, spoiled people, isn't it? Apostle Paul says, we know, we are accepted by the Lord, adopted by the Lord, and assisted by the Holy Spirit. And now, the Bible says here, God works in all things. Sometimes, we don't really understand. Sometimes we feel, you know, you know, that nothing good is happening to us. But when we commit our life to the Lord Jesus Christ, be reminded again and again, God works in every situation in our life. He is the one who orchestrates the events of the world. Nothing is beyond his control. Nothing is beyond his, you know, it is out of control. Do you know what the Bible says? He holds the heart of the kings in his hand. He is called the king of kings and the lord of lords. He is the everlasting one. All the events of the world, they are under his control. Not only the events of the world, but the events in your personal life. God is in control. God is in control. Sometimes, you know, some people come and, you know, speak him and they say that, I'm praying for this one and the Lord is not answering. Do you know, sometimes the Lord will not answer? Do you know why? Because sometimes we ask for the knife and the scorpions and all those things and the stones. You remember what Jesus said? If your son comes and asks for a bread, will you give him a stone, a scorpion? Sometimes, you know, because we are so immature, we do not understand the mind of God. You know, if your child comes and asks the father or the mother, daddy, I would like to have this knife, please give me. What will daddy say? No, it is not good for you because you do not know how to handle. Sometimes, we ask for the scorpions and the snakes. And the Lord says with all his love, son, this is not necessary for you. But remind, be reminded, God works in all the things of our life. Just now, we sang this song, what is that? He's still working in us. It just took a week for him to make the sun, moon, and the stars, you know? He saw something in us. He saw something in the life of Simon. And therefore, when he met Jesus, he said, you are going to be careful. I'm going to make you Peter. And on this rock, I will build my church. He saw something in our life and he wants to do something through our life. And therefore, he is orchestrating every event in our life. It doesn't really matter how many years, but God wants to work with us and inside of us. God works in all things. You remember the story? I'll read this verse for you, Daniel, chapter six. Chapter six, verse 17, I'll read for you. Yeah, chapter six, verse 17, from the book of Daniel, it says like this. "Then a stone was brought and laid on the mouth of the den, and the king sealed it with his own signet ring and with the signets of his lords." And look at carefully, "that the purpose concerning Daniel might not be changed." Have you noticed this one? I'm reading the NKGB version, that the purpose concerning Daniel might not be changed. It was already decided. The king has already put his seal. And all the people who are working with Daniel, they were against him. They devised a plan. And that plan was working. Daniel continued to pray three times in a day. And they saw him, you know, praying. And they also informed the king. And they also made the decision. They stowed the lions, they prepared the den. And now, they put Daniel in the lion's den. So that the purpose regarding Daniel might not be changed. But you know, whose purpose prevailed? The purpose of the people or the purpose of God? It was the Lord's purpose which prevailed. Because God is in charge of our lives. He is in charge of our life. And therefore, he works in all things. How many things? All things. How many things? All things. He works in all things. There's a first thought that I wanted to leave with you. The second thing, you know, as we see Romans, chapter eight, verse 28, you know, it says, and 29, I'll read for you. And we know that all things work together for good to those who love God and to those who are called according to his purpose, you know? God in all things has, you know, a plan and a purpose for your life. How wonderful to know God does, how wonderful to know that God has a, God made a plan for us. And how wonderful to know that God's plan is not to harm us, but to give us a hope and a future. Not only for this life, but also even beyond this life. He has a plan. And therefore, he is working according to that plan. And that's why we see in the book of Jeremiah, chapter 29, verse 11. "For I know the plans that I have for you, plans not to harm you, but to give you a hope and a future." Isn't it wonderful to know that the Creator God has a plan and a purpose for you? You know, even in the life of Jeremiah, God says, even before you are there in the mother's womb, "I have chosen you, I have appointed you to be a prophet for the nations." There is a God who is thinking about you. And there's a reason, even before we are born into this world. The Bible says in the book of Ephesians, chapter one, verse four, "He has chosen us even before the foundations of this world, that we should be holy and blameless in his sight." He has chosen you, my dear friend. He has appointed you. And not only that one, he has a plan for you. And that plan is not to harm you, but to give you a hope and a future. And to whom Jeremiah is giving this word? To the people who are there in captivity. They were living in Babylon. For those people who are caught up in the captivity of Babylon, the Lord spoke to his prophet Jeremiah and asked him to convey this message to the people who are there, living in captivity. And what is that message? "I have plans for you, not to harm you, but to give you a hope and a future." And God's plans are always important. And they are always good, perfect, and acceptable for us. He foreknew that we need a Savior. And there's a reason we see in the book of Revelation, chapter 13, verse eight, "The Lamb that was slain before the foundation of the world." Are you getting it? It was not an afterthought in the mind of God, sending his only begotten Son as a Savior. He has chosen us before the foundation of this world. God in his sour and wisdom, he foreknew that there will be a need for the Savior. And that's the reason the Bible says, "The Lamb that was slain even before the foundations of the world." Even before we were able to see the first day in our life being born in this world, God's eyes are upon you. And he has a plan for your life. And what is that plan? The third thing that I wanted to share with you, verse 29, it says, "For whom he foreknew," shall read verse 29 together, Romans, chapter eight, verse 29. Yeah. "And for whom he foreknew, he also predestined to be confirmed to the image of his Son, that he might be the firstborn among many brethren." God orchestrates every event in our life. The second thing, God has a plan for your life. And the third thing, God wants us to be confirmed to his image. And therefore, whatever he does, he does with an intent. He does with a purpose. Whatever he allows in our life, may not be good things according to us, but he allows those things with a, you know, with a purpose so that you and I will be coming closer and closer to him. And we will be becoming more and more to him, and we will be becoming more and more like Jesus Christ. You see, in the book of Malachi, chapter three, verse two and verse three, there are two things that, you know, Malachi uses, I will read it for you, the book of Malachi, chapter, sorry, it is chapter three, verse two and verse three. Yeah? It says like this, but who can endure the day of his coming? Who can stand when he appears? For he is like a refiner's, refiner's fire, and like launderer's soap. He will sit as a refiner and a purifier of silver. He will purify the sons of levy and purge them as gold and silver, that they may offer to the Lord, an offering in righteousness. He is using two terms. He says, he is like a launderer's soap, and he is also like a refiner's fire. I think sometime back, there was this massive fire that caught up in Hollywood. You are aware of that one, no? That was not the refiner's fire, that was a destructive fire, isn't it? How many houses and how many things were, you know, turned into dust and ashes in no time? Time is up?
No.
Okay, okay, yeah. So, you know, it was a destructive fire, everything, you know, was made into dust and ashes. But the fire that we see here, it is called the refiner's fire. What is so special with the refiner's fire? You can see, Malachi, chapter three, verse three, it says, he will sit, have you noticed this one? He will sit as a refiner's fire. That means he will not just ignite something and leave it, but he will sit with you, and he will carefully watch over you. He knows how much we'll be able to endure. He knows our threshold, he knows our limits, and therefore, he will not let us beyond our capability. And that's what Apostle Paul says in the book of Corinthians, you will not be tempted beyond your capability. You know, not only, you know, he knows and understands, and therefore, he sets the limits and the boundaries. He will sit carefully watching. When the goldsmith tries to purify the gold and silver, do you know what he does? He will try to put that fire, and he will constantly watching and watching and watching over that one. Do you know what is a sign of purity according to the goldsmith? He takes the gold and looks at it like this. If he is able to seek his image in that gold, that means it is purified. And that's how God is also working in our lives with only one intent, like a refiner's fire and a launderer's soap, launderer's soap, till we be confirmed to the image of his son, Christ Jesus. God works in all things. God has a purpose. God wants us to be confirmed to his image. And finally, one more thought, and I will close this one. God wants us to live like Jesus. God wants us to live like Jesus. How do I look at the life of Jesus? We see in First Peter, chapter two, verse twenty-two, that we should, he left an example, twenty-one and twenty-two, Christ left for us an example, you know? He, we should follow in his footsteps. He left an example for us. How do we look at Christ Jesus in our day-to-day walk? I see him like this humility in action, purity in action, charity in action, you know? And that's how we see in the life of Jesus. Look at the Lord Jesus Christ. We see in the book of Philippians, chapter two, verse five to eight, let this mind of Christ be also in you, who being God, he left everything, became a human, became a servant, and as if that is not sufficient, he humbled himself even to the point of dying on the cross of Calvary. Generally, in the workplace, when you try to work, you know, what you would love to see, we're trying to climb up the ladder, isn't it? If you become a manager, you want to become a senior manager. If you have become a senior manager, you want to become a vice president or something like that. You want to climb up the ladder. But look at the Lord Jesus Christ, it is exactly the opposite thing. He left his divinity, became a human being, and as if it is not sufficient, became a servant, and as if it is not sufficient, even he was willing to die on the cross of Calvary, you know, dying a brutal death. Not only that one, we see in John's Gospel, chapter thirteen, the last few hours that Jesus was living on the face of this earth. And we see in John's Gospel, chapter thirteen, verse three and four, all the people were gathered, Jesus was there, and also his disciples, they were gathered in that room. And all the disciples, the people, they were waiting, who will come and wash our feet? Maybe Peter was thinking, John will come. John was thinking, maybe Andrew or James will come. So everyone is thinking, who will be the one who can wash our feet? And then we see, Jesus stood up, he took out his outer coat, and he wrapped a towel around, and took the basin, filled it with water, and he was going to the disciples, washing the feet of his disciples. How can we imagine that? How can you imagine that? He is God. He is the son of the living God, Christ the Messiah. But look at, he was called the, he was the master and the teacher. All these twelve disciples, they were with him, they were following the master. But he stood up. All the twelve disciples were watching what he is going to do. He stood up, took out his outer coat, wrapped a towel around him, took the wash basin and the water, and he started washing the feet of the disciples. And then he says, have you seen what I did? I left an example for you. I'm still your master, I'm still your teacher, but look at what I did for you. How do we see Jesus? He was even willing to wash the feet of Judas, knowing the fact that he is going to lift up his heel against him. Because in the chapter we see, he knew who was going to betray him. Jesus humbled himself, he became a servant. Humility in action. The second thing, purity in action. He had hundred percent human nature. Hebrews, chapter two, verse seventeen of four fifteen, he had a will of his own also, but he was speaking to the lady there at the well, he was all alone. And we've seen Luke's Gospel, chapter seven, there was this sinful lady who came to the house of this pharisee when Jesus was seated over there. She came and she was washing the feet of Jesus, and she was also wiping the feet of Jesus. The pharisee was thinking, if he was a prophet, he would know what manner of a woman is this, a sinful lady. But we cannot see anything sinful in the life of Jesus Christ. Who of you can convict, convict sin in me? That was an open challenge. Humility in action, purity in action, and even charity in action. He lout, he lout and lout and lout. It is said that there is no end for purity and charity. The moment you reach certain level of holiness, you realize suddenly, there is much more, many more areas where we need to be refined and be purified. The moment you reach certain level, showing your love and charity, you realize there is much more that you could love and you could show charity. There was a time in the life of Jesus, when John the Baptist was beheaded, we see in Matthew's Gospel, chapter fourteen, verse twelve, thirteen, and fourteen, he was disturbed, you know, and he went to a solitary place because he was disturbed about the death of John the Baptist. And you know, people came to know that Jesus was there, they came, and we see there, Jesus had compassion on them. What made Jesus, though his own flesh was telling, I will not be able to drink this cup? Do you know why? Because of his love towards each one of us. This is how we know what love is, that Christ died for our sins. Humility in action, purity in action, charity in action, and even, you know, sometimes we wonder, is it possible for us to be like Jesus? May I remind you, this morning, we see in the book of Acts, chapter seven, verse fifty-nine and verse sixty, Stephen was not even one of the twelve apostles. He was a man who was chosen for what job? To serve the tables. And this man, no one was able to stand against the wisdom that the Lord has given to Stephen. And finally, what they wanted to do with Stephen, they wanted to get rid of him. They were stoning him to death. But look at the words that Stephen spoke in the last few moments of his life. He said, you know, in verse fifty-nine, Lord, I commit my spirit into your hands. And in verse sixty, he says, do not lay this charge against these people. Sounding like Jesus, isn't it? What was the first word that Jesus spoke from the cross of Calvary? Father, forgive them, for they do not know what they are doing. Forgive them. And what was the last word that Jesus spoke? Father, into your hands I commit my spirit. He was speaking like Jesus, speaking like Jesus. My dear brothers and sisters, God has called you. God works in all things. God has a plan for you. God wants us to be confirmed to the image of Jesus, and God wants us to live like Jesus. And not only Stephen, in the first century, I do not know whether you remember, in the year nineteen ninety-nine, that was a cold wintry night, Graham stains, he was a missionary working with the lepers, you know, in the state of Orissa. He came to India as an young man, and he started working with the lepers. They were thrown outside, no one used to come and visit these people. But he came, and he started living with them, bandaging the wounds of these lepers, taking care of these people. And he was also sharing the love of Christ Jesus. He had three children, two sons, Philip and Timothy, ten years old and six years old. He went for the ministry, and there in that night, on that night, he was sleeping in that jeep, on that particular night, in the month of January, people came, and they burnt them alive. Imagine the plight of the mother who lost her husband, who lost the, you know, son's ten-year-old and six-year-old son. But look at the words that his wife spoke, Jesus taught us to forgive, and I'm here to forgive these people, whom? They killed their husband, they killed, burned them alive, even the two young children. God wants us to live like Jesus. Let the beauty of Jesus be seen in me, all his wonders, compassion, and purity, oh thou Spirit divine. Let the beauty of Jesus be seen in us. Shall we close our eyes? Heavenly Father, we come before you. We want to thank you for being with us and for speaking with us, dear Lord. We commit our lives once again unto thy gracious hands. We lay them on that altar, and we want to continue to remain on that altar. You continue to work with us and help us, dear Father, that we be confirmed to the image of your son, Jesus. Want to commit each dear and brother, each brother and sister unto thy gracious hands. May you continue to work a deeper thing in our lives. We want to give you all the glory. We ask all this in the precious name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen. Thank you and God bless.